Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting for the Easter City Council Orientation Session. Today is May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the time is six oh two P M. All right, I want to just get right off into tonight's agenda. And before we get started, Council, I just sent you a special events request for Memorial Day Weekend for Carnival to be held at South River Park and Easter Road by requests coming from Ruth Williams and the Inster Summer Festival Committee. And I just sent it to you. We just got it today. And we know that we have a special events packet that needs to be signed off on. Looking for, of course, the road to be closed at South River between Easter Road and just that other street right there. Somebody help me out. Right by the chase thing.
Either west or west here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so what are you suggesting? West Hill? West.
I think west is the one. It's the street just before you get to the bank.
Okay.
I mean, how many? I mean, what? How many rides are they gonna go back that far?
No, they shouldn't go back that far. I think they're bringing about ten to fifteen rides, kind of a carnival setup, and be spaced out so it'll be, you know, COVID friendly.
So they use the parking lot, the old court parking lot, the police parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. Do they have the mid for tonight? You got the package already?
Yep, I'll send that to you.
Okay. Because that's our council has to do is approve that because that's our road, so I can close that road.
I'd like to add that on to the agenda if it's no objections. There's no objections from Council. So that'll be item F. And of course, it'll be contingent upon getting into the clerk's office and getting all the necessary other documents that would be needed as it relates to insurance and things of that nature. All right.
But I think that I think it's gonna be item G.
I'm looking at the revised agenda. Let's see, A, B, C, D. I have A, B, C, E. What do you have? Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. Sorry. Looking at my old stuff.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then Council, last week, the city treasurer sent out an email as relates to the budget amendments and the approval for the budget tonight. Mayor Protim Howard requested that we allow this item to these both of these items to stay on the table to our June seventh meeting. The email did go out to the full body, and we would ask that those items remain table until June the seventh, unless the council wants to do something else. All right then, well, let's move right into any questions on new business item A? Any questions on new business item B? Any questions on item C? Any questions on item D? And then any questions on item F? I know you just just received the packet and sent your email. If you haven't received it, please let me know so I could resend that out to you. Again, the request is coming from Ruthie Williams on the behalf of the Inster Summer Music Festival Committee to host Memorial Day Carnival, starting on noon on the twenty-eighth, which is that Friday, and ending at ten P M. on Monday. The well, actually, the hours of operation would be from twelve to ten P M. every day, and then ending on Monday, Memorial Day at ten P M. We're right here and done. David, do you have any closed session items for us?
No, not tonight, Mayor.
All right, if there's no questions or comments as relates to tonight's business from the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Number five down here, B, and number B.
Item B?
Yeah, is this five lots?
Let's see. Page thirty-four. If I could have Tracy.
She got down here two vacant parcels, but it looked like this is about five lots. Lots fourteen fifty-eight to fourteen sixty-eight. Look like it's more than five lots.
Tracy, I see you on the call there. Can you speak to that, of course?
Good evening. I will have to, because my copies are not the clearest right now. I don't have to look into this. This is just two vacant parcels, but it there is a possibility that the lots, they are rather large, could be five lots.
But those are two, two parcels.
Two parcels, so.
There's a green here that was five lots and a half adjacent to an alley.
Okay, that's too much information. Let's get the Yeah, it looks like it's two parcels. Like two parcels. Answer your question, Councilman. That's two parcels.
It can be, it can be two parcels, but yet still the lots could be real large lots. And if it's five lots, you know, at two hundred dollars a lot, you know.
There's two, two, two fifty is the sta- two fifty is the standard. I know that we've been in, we've been in talks about raising that, like that cost, so that will actually come up as relates to our fee schedule. We wanted to make sure that we added that this time around, so we're all on the same page as relates to, you know, how much we're we're charging for vacant lots and buildable lots. Because right now it's two, the standard has been two fifty for yeah, and and five hundred for buildable.
Well.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may. Stephanie Murray Taylor is trying to raise her hand to kind of give a little bit of insight to the Realtor. She she said she's trying to raise her hand.
Please let her, please.
What's the last four of her phone number?
Oh, give me a second. Hold on.
That eight, five, two, six?
Yes.
Okay, Stephanie, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and Council. How are you? Can you guys hear me really well?
We can hear you.
Okay, yes, it's two parcels. However, the the parcels have little tiny lots within them, but both of them are buildable, so that's why for buildable lots residential, you guys have in your policy to sell them for five hundred dollars minimum. And non-buildable, you guys have in your policy two fifty. Until you guys change that price on residential, that's what it has been, but they are larger parcels, but they tiny lots within the parcel. And that's that's what we worked on this week because she didn't want to do the mixed use location. She'll rather do a residential location, and that property is on currently residential only.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Okay. So no closed session and no other comments as it relates to tonight's business. We'll pause right here and give the council a break into seven P M. And we'll come back for the general meeting. Meeting of the Inster City Council. Today's date is May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the time is seven P M. Like to call this meeting to order. As we get started, we'll do the pledges of allegiance. Before we have tonight, Pastor Antonio Wimberly of One Mission Church will lead us in prayer. We will have a moment of silence for our fallen colleague, Lorenzo Mona, former councilman Mona passed away last week, and we want to make sure that we recognize him and his service to our community. So all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence for Councilman Lorenzo Mona. Thank you. Pastor Wimberly, One Mission Baptist Church, please lead us in a moment of prayer.
Father God, we come to you today, and we truly thank you for this another day that you have allowed us to see a day that we've never seen before. And so, Lord, on today, in this meeting, Lord, I just lift up the city of Inster. I lift up the business that has to be taken care of for our great city, Lord. I pray, Lord, that this meeting will be ran decent and in order. I pray, Lord, that we would all be family and support and love and work with one another on tonight. We love you, and we truly thank you. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Wimberly. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here reporting from City Hall in Inster, Michigan.
Mayor Protim Howard has an excused absence. Councilwoman Watley.
Yes, present, reporting from my home in Inster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilman Williams.
Reporting from my home, Inster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes, reporting in my home in the city of Inster in the County of Wayne.
Councilman Chisholm.
Present, reporting from my home, Inster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilman Shaw.
Here in the city of Inster.
Mayor, we have five presents. I'm sorry, six presents tonight, and we do have a quorum.
All right, moving right along, approval of the agenda with the addition of item.
Actually, E.
Item E.
I'm like, I think it's E.
With item E.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
There's support. Any others? Any other discussion here in Nun? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have five, yay.
All right, moving right into tonight's agenda. I know that we confirmed for our treasurer to be here with us tonight, so I want to I don't see his name. Maybe he has a number. If you could raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, this is Beverly Lynn Hilton from the treasurer's office, so I will reach out to him so he can get on the call.
All right, perfect, then. So we'll 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 wait for his arrival. When we see him come in, of course, we'll acknowledge him, but we'll move right on with our agenda. Thank you, Beverly. All right, let's have item B, presented by our director for Inster Housing, Aaron Cooper. I did hear him on the line.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Good evening, Council.
Evening.
Good evening.
And good evening for those on the phone and the general public. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing the Inster Housing Commission to be on the city's agenda today. It's appreciative. This this actual discussion slash presentation item states Public Notice of Inster Housing Commission intent to submit an application for the demolition disposition of Canterbury Estates. And so for the mayor and the council, I asked the mayor if the housing commission could be on the agenda for today. A little background on the reasoning for the agenda item. Canterbury Estates is a twenty-four unit complex owned by the Inster Housing Commission. It runs from forty-three oh one Harriet through forty-four oh one Harriet between the cross streets of Pine and Annapolis. It consists of two separate buildings, both housing twelve units apiece. There's a property that is, the property was previously owned in our search by a Saint Clement's Church. And it appears that the Inster Housing Commission, from our research, purchased or assumed the property ship, property ownership in nineteen seventy-eight. And so I read those brief descriptions of the property to give the council just a understanding in the general public and understanding of the location of Canterbury Estates. Some history about Canterbury Estates and the reason that we are again on the agenda for today is the housing commission is really looking at its portfolio and looking at how we can best serve the residents of Inster Housing as well as the community. Canterbury Estates has been a unit that for some time now, we've had certain maintenance conditions. We've had vacancies to the point to where internally, we decided that it was a best practice for us to close and vacate the property. In discussions with HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD supported this action. And HUD continues to support our action into looking at what's called repositioning of this property specifically. With that being said, what repositioning means is that the housing commission is ultimately ultimately looking at Canterbury Estates as a property that we may look to either dispose of, which means either sell or demolish. One of the requirements as this process goes along the path is for the Inster Housing Commission to make this public in the form of a city council meeting. Hence the reason why I'm appreciative of Mayor Wimberly for allowing us to get on this agenda, because it only expedites, you know, our process. But again, right now, we're in the early stages of discussions and what exactly to do with the Canterbury Estates. There has been no formal plan to demolish. There has been no formal approval to demolish, and there's been no formal approval from HUD to sell the property as of today. But again, the Inster Housing Commission is in the process of discussing those options with HUD and taking the actual process through, you know, HUD's HUD's process that has to occur before anything before we can do anything with the property. So again, I would just want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to take a few minutes to make our intent public with the Canterbury Estates. As many may have seen, currently, the property is vacant, is fully secured, and we still maintain the property. It's still the ownership of Inster Housing Commission. It is still our responsibility to maintain the property, secure the property. But we also know that the property is in a neighborhood that we can't just leave a property vacant. So again, this this serves both best the community as well as the Inster Housing Commission. If there's any questions, we can fill those at the time, at this time.
Any questions from this body? Well, Aaron, let me just say right off, man, that you're doing a fabulous job. You come in and you hit the ground running in housing and know that we've had some challenges there, but we really appreciate your work ethic and that of your team. We're looking forward to partnering with you, anything that we can do to make living conditions and quality of life better in Inster Housing. That's what we're here to do. Thank you very much for your time in bringing this to to the public, to the forefront.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right, without further ado, our illustrious treasurer, Wayne County Treasurer, Honorable Eric Sabree is on the line, and I'm going to turn it over to him. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Treasurer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wimberly, members of the council, Inster. I wanted to hope every, I said, I hope everyone is staying safe and that this this pandemic has caused us to change our way of doing business and lifestyle. But but I see that we we're making progress, and I just want to stay hopeful that we're going to continue to make progress. One of the things I just want to briefly mention today is that we have, we have a, an extension granted to all the occupied properties in Wayne County that were facing foreclosure. Judge Kenny, Third Circuit Chief Judge, granted our motion to extend the redemption period for anyone that's facing foreclosure in occupied property till next year, till March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. So that gives some relief to those homeowners, those even renters who are in properties that right now we're facing foreclosure. That's that's the good news. The bad news is is that Inster is having a lot of trouble with property tax foreclosure. And it actually is, it's a city with the most difficult city in the county besides Detroit, and we want to turn that around. And we we're working hard. We have a lot of programs available, and I want to mention a couple of them. But one is that the Pay As You Stay program. Initially, initially, Inster opted out of this program. But we're trying to find a way to allow, the law says that if you opt out of it, then you are excluded from participating. So we're trying to to find a way that there's a bill been introduced that will allow cities to have a second chance, in other words, to change their mind. And this this program will allow people with extensive tax delinquency who are low income to basically eliminate most of their tax debt. In the in Detroit, you know, Dan Gilbert Foundation is paying off the balances of anyone who participates in this program. But even if you don't get your balance paid off by someone else, it's such a small amount of money that if you become exempt because of your income, the city has to exempt you through the assessor's office. You can get probably eighty percent or ninety percent of your taxes eliminated. And that that's that's the positive thing. Eighteen eighteen cities and autopsies are participating right now. And we did, we did have a request from Inster and I think River Rouge, who wanted to reconsider and change their mind. So we're we're working on that. And there's a bill introduced, I think Mary Kavanaugh is going to introduce a bill to amend the law to allow cities who opted out to be able to come back in. So that's that's the that's positive. The other thing I want to mention is that the Step Forward Program that that ran out of money recently is going to be revitalized with the rescue funds, the stimulus funds from Washington. It's they are going to put about two hundred and fifty million dollars into that fund. It's going to help people who are facing foreclosure, mortgage foreclosure, tax property tax foreclosure, the condo, anyone who's in a condo, and also utility assistance. This money has not yet been appropriated by the legislature, but it's anticipated very soon. And this will help a lot of taxpayers. It's going to be income based, and it will be a grant and not a loan, as the other Step Forward Program was a forgivable loan. There'll be a grant up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So I think the initially, they said it'd be a hundred and fifty percent of area median income. You have to make, I think, you can't make more than a hundred and fifty percent of the area median income. And they will also target some zip codes. So if you live in a certain zip code, then you would be eligible also for this step forward program. So that's those are, those are some programs that are coming, I think, that will help Inster a lot. The there's a lot of people who took advantage of our payment plans. Some of them fell off because of COVID. They lost their jobs and so forth. So hopefully, this this one-year extension will give people a chance to regroup and take advantage of some of the programs that are out there. I just wanted to mention that. And, Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm always available for to come to Inster, and and council members know that I'm available to come and talk to the residents or any forum that you have that you think that we can, we can participate in to get the word out that we don't wait till the last minute. Come and see us. We have to make an appointment now to get into Treasurer's Office, but you can call us. You can email us. Taxinfo@wayncity.com is the best way to reach us by email. That's taxinfo@wayncity.com. Beverly Lynn Hilton, who is our Outreach Director, she's on the call too, and she's, she can put all this information in chat so that you have it. It's already in the chat. Thanks, Beverly Lynn. And so reach out to us, and we're here, we're here to help. We want to get Inster off this troubled list, so to speak, and and get get these foreclosures down in the city of Inster.
Well, we really appreciate you for taking out the time, Treasurer, to talk with us. We definitely need to work together to put on a community forum, so I'll reach back out to to Beverly. Is that?
Beverly Lynn Hilton.
Okay, good. I'll reach back out to Ms. Hitt, Hinton, and we'll do something. We'll get something going. I hear quickly. Is it any questions or comments from Council for our treasurer while we have? Thank you so much for your time, sir. Really appreciate you and the work that you're doing in the county. Thank you.
County members, the council members, and I want to, I want to let you know that don't feel shy. Call us anytime. You know, this is what we do. We go out and we we try and get get folks oriented into the timeline that we have so that they're not they're not caught in the last minute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Consider agenda. Is there a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
There's support?
Support.
Mood and properly supported. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, where are you?
I'm sorry. I heard someone say mayor. It sounded like Vijay.
Yep. Mayor, uh, I just wanted to check. Could we add the Allen Brothers invoice to the consent agenda?
Well, we, you know, we, we asked for, you know, all of our stuff to be into the city clerk's office by noon to, to make it to the agenda, but that's something that the council would like to do. I know that it's just consent. Um, I believe, I know that I received a copy of it, I think Thursday. That's something that the council would like to do. We can add it on. But we want to make sure that in the future that we have those things to us in a timely manner.
I add it on to the motion, Mr. Chairman. If there's support.
What's the amount?
What's the amount, Vijay?
Uh, David, are you on here? He just texted and asked me to have this.
Yeah, he's there.
Yeah, I, I'm here. Um, it, it was, um, this is the April invoice. It, it was emailed to council. It was, the total is twenty-nine, seven, three, seven point two-two.
Is there support for that? Make of the motion.
I made, I made, I made the motion, I think, uh.
Yep. We just need support for it.
She wanted to add that too.
Councilwoman Washington, you support that?
She's on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, that's okay. That's fine.
All right then. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
No.
Mayor, we have four yays.
All right. Motion carries. Moving right along. Boards and Commissions. On around any boards, commissions?
I have none tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I believe, uh, we did get one request for Felicia Rutledge to be appointed to the Elections Commission. Is there a motion and support for that?
Make a motion.
Or support.
Support.
Support. Any discussion on that? Hearing on roll call, please, City Clerk. You're on mute. You're on mute, Mel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yays.
All right. Motion carries. Any other boards and commissions? All right. Moving into previous business. As, uh, we talked about in orientation session, it was requested by our mayor pro temp that is not in attendance tonight, that we keep the items tabled into the June seventh meeting. We did send out a email. The Treasurer sent out a email on May the tenth to the council as it relates to this. So it's your pleasure.
Oh, uh, is there, is there a particular reason why we are holding this up?
Well, I think that she wanted to be, you know, of course involved in the process. And we would like to have, you know, the council, the full body, the full complement of council together when we vote on this issue, whether it's up or down.
Then let me ask a question before, before, um, okay, now we had a deadline. The, our budget amendment had to be, uh, in, uh, what, in, uh, and at the state level, uh, when, uh, you know, we had a deadline. I know the deadline is real close.
The, if you're referring to the deficit elimination plan, we submitted that a couple of weeks ago. That was the one that has, it's forward-looking for, uh, five years and it's based on the prior year audit. So that, that one's already been submitted. The, the budget amendment itself in theory just has to be approved by the end of the fiscal year, although we don't want to wait till the last minute, obviously. Um, but we also did, um, we received an email from Councilman Chisholm with a lot of good, uh, ideas and input, you know, things that we want to consider. And we want to make sure that we, uh, give proper consideration of that before just putting this back on the table. So, and that email came today, so we need to make sure that we're uh, looking into all the items, considering them, discussing before we, uh, consider it for voting again.
Okay. So the items are on the table currently. Of course, we would have to make a motion to remove them. So if you all are okay with, uh, remain, leaving them on the table, we'll move forward. Um, with this, like I said, we want to make sure that, you know, everyone has an opportunity just to, to, to be involved and of course, especially at the council level, because it is our fiduciary responsibility to, you know, submit a balanced budget and then of course, make sure that we execute that. So we want everybody involved. Whether, you know, you vote up or down, however, we want to make sure that, you know, everyone has an opportunity and she did request that, you know, seven days ago. So I want to do my best to accommodate if we can. All right. Hearing no objections to that. Let's get off into our new business. City Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor, there, I, I can't, there was an item B up under previous business that needs to be removed from the agenda. And I think it's the property on, um, the west side of Beach State between Yale Street and North Worth Street. Um, so is that being, that's being removed from the agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion on that or something like that? We just, we just, we just removed it. Period.
It was removed, was it removed at the beginning of the meeting? Um, I thought I heard you say something about it, but, um,
Okay.
Goodness, Wayne. So it's removed from the agenda because she's doing something different down up under New Business. So it is, I'm removing it from the agenda.
All right. Sounds good then. All right. Let's move on into new business. You're, you're back on mute again. See, clerk. I know it's just a habit. I, I get it.
I know. The plane was so loud. Item A under, uh, New Business is consideration and approval of a special event for Gosemane Missionary Baptist Church for an anniversary service to be held on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The applicant is Joseph Samples on behalf of Gosemane Missionary Baptist Church.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Your support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yays.
All right. Motion carries.
Item B is consideration and approval to purchase two vacant parcels located on the north side of Annapolis between Inkster Road and Sylvia Street, which is legally described as duly noted in the amount of a thousand dollars to Octavia Smith to build a home.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
The support?
Support.
The mood and properly supported discussion? Hearing none roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Would like to abstain.
Thank you. And Councilmember?
What's the reason for abstaining?
Being that, uh, the mother of my employer is the purchaser.
All right. Sounds good.
And Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have four yays and one abstain.
All right. Motion carries. Moving right along.
Item C is consideration and approval of one offer to purchase a vacant parcel located on the north side of Penn Street between Bayhand Street and Meadow Street as duly noted and legally described in the amount of five hundred dollars to Matt Hall. The purpose is additional land adjacent to rear of his property.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Over the, in, uh,
Okay. It's been moved improperly. It, it, was that, Wiley?
I couldn't hear who supported that.
I'll support it.
All right. Moved and properly supported. Any discussion? Hearing none roll call, please.
Councilmember Watley?
You're on mute.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yays.
All right. Motion carries. Right into me.
Item D is consideration and approval of one offer to purchase the vacant parcel located on the west side of William Street between Carlisle Street and Andover as legally described and duly noted in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to Christ Temple. The purpose is additional land adjacent to the rear of Mother's Pantry Property.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
There's support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported. Any discussion? Hearing none roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
Yeah.
Mayor, we have five yays.
All right. Motion carries. Item F, I mean E, please. That's why I wanted to be there.
I know. Item E is, um, consideration and approval for a special event for a carnival for Memorial Day on South River Park from twelve o'clock PM until ten o'clock PM. And I believe the applicant is Ruthie Williams?
Yes.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
There's support? There's support?
Support.
Discussion? Hearing none roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
I would approve on the contingency basis that we see the, uh, insurance prior to the event occurring.
Okay. Um, the maker, um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Make of the motion. Add that to support.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, okay. Councilmember Watley? Okay. Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yays.
All right. Motion carries. All right. That brings us to public participation. Councilman Chisholm?
We are a public participation. For those who have joined us by video, please use the raise hand feature. And once you are recognized, please state your name for the record. You have one minute to address this body. For those who have joined us by telephone, please press star nine so that your hand is raised and you can be recognized. Once you are recognized, please state your name for the record and you have one minute to address this body. Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have two hands raised, both by telephone.
All right. Let's recognize two, five, seven, one.
Goodne- good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Tony Bailey, beautification. I want to say this Saturday coming up is our month for our community-wide cleanup. Last month, we had a great turnout, so we looking to have another turnout, um, this weekend. Um, I also want to remind, uh, um, residents, the dumpsters, the four locations, Wheatley Park, Lamont Park, Westwood Park, and at the, uh, Book of Dozier. We also give out, um, community service certificates. So, uh, some who forgot to get theirs, um, last month, we still have them available for you. Uh, uh, meet up at the rec center, uh, nine AM. We have gloves and trash bags and refreshment. Hope to see everyone out.
All right. And then just to add to that, Mr. Vivins, as it relates to the breast site, when are we looking to have that open? I know that we have it on our budget for this year to get it cleaned. What, are we going to have it open at all this year?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
What are, what are we doing with, uh, folks in the community that's looking to get rid of their brush?
Um, they have to, uh, adhere to the, uh, rubbish agreement with, uh, GFL, which is, uh, chop it up in less than four feet and left. Bond with, can't weigh more than fifty pounds and put it at the curb and then it'd be picked up.
All right then.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor, on that.
Please.
I, I busy one of the, uh, one of the residents over on Hopkins yesterday and she, and she brought that question up and I, I always thought, okay, and they was questioning about whether or not, how many they can put out there. Okay. But these are all four feet and wrapped up and I just told her, put them, you know, put them out there. You know, as long as they wrapped and tied, they should take them. Now, is, is there a limit on them or what?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, because I was going, I'm, I'm sorry. I was going to call you, uh, you a girl because I told her, just set them all out there. They got them wrapped up and taped up and stuff like that, but I, I'm just hoping that they pick it up, that she wanted to pick up. It's just, uh, may a couple on, on, uh, Hopkins.
That's tomorrow's route. So if she has an issue, if they don't get picked up, tell her, let me know, but there's no limit. But I was just, less than four feet and they're bonding. The bunnies are weighing more than fifty pounds. They're supposed to pick up everything at the curb.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they don't weigh more than fifty pounds. So they got, they got real nice and neat. So.
Okay. And, and you say she live on Hopkins?
On Hopkins, right.
Yeah. I ride by there in the morning and take a look at it.
Hey, left-hand side.
All right.
Yeah. Now, we are, I mean, Jerome, as soon as, you know, if it's approved in the budget, we are looking to get the, the, uh, site cleaned up and then allow, you know, for our regular, you know, the community to be able to dump there, correct?
Yes, sir. Once, once we get that site cleaned up and hauled off site, we will sit down with you at, uh, um, put together a process because you know what we had discussed earlier. I want to implement that.
Okay. Now, I know the folks are, are, you know, coarse cutting and cleaning right now. We really fought all those folks in the community that's doing the work and they have to haul their stuff out of the community. Um, you know, let's, let's get together and see if we could, you know, maybe we got to pile it up and stack, you know, push it back, use the machines to push back the brush we have there now to allow for awesome folks to get in. Maybe, you know, a couple of days out the week until we get everything situated.
Well, um, we, we could talk about that offline as far as, uh, probably my guys assist because I, I just for liability reason, I won't let nobody go into the brush site.
Okay. That's understandable. Thank you.
All right. All right.
All right. Chair recognize, uh, phone number ending in three, five, nine, seven.
Hi, yes. My name is, uh, Bobby Womack and.
All right. Next caller, three, zero, four, zero.
Three, zero, four, zero is unmuted.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. This is Octavia Smith. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for, um, your go-ahead. And second, just want to keep you in mind of Western Wayne Family Health Center. We are sending out information for anyone who is in any stage of kidney disease. We are having through the National Kidney Foundation, uh, online six-week class. And I have sent that out to multiple um, locations on the website, on Facebook. So if anyone is in need of services to help them live with, self-manage. live with, self-manage their chronic kidney disease issues, please give us a call at three, one, three, five, six, one, five, one, zero, zero. You can definitely dial my extension, which is one, three, nine. And we just like to ask you to continue to um keep all the people in prayer and health who are struggling with the COVID. And I was to want to send a condolences to um Lorenzo Moner's family. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Smith. Right, Chair, recognize you, Vett Brock.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I just want to let everyone know that has not gotten their COVID shot. You know, all COVID shots are free right now, and from May twenty-fourth to July fourth, they will continue to be free. You can text the number um four, three, eight, eight, two, nine with your zip code, and they will give you all of the locations that are available. Um, the United States has over eighty thousand locations. And right now, we're at sixty percent of the people in the U S that has at least gotten one shot. So the people who've gotten their COVID shot, I just want to say thank you because we're the people that's looking out for the rest of them. We want to encourage you because as things open up, there's no real way to know if somebody's gotten their shots or not. So we want to encourage as much, many people as can to get their COVID shot is very, very important. It's no different than we got our shots for polo and things when we were younger. So I just want to encourage you, and you know that um you can get a ride for free from Lyft. Um, and those people um that have the Lyft process, they are taking people to these sites for free. So there's nothing sta- standing in your way. Excuse me, I had some work done, and that's why it sounds so funny. But it's nothing standing in your way for taking care of yourself. And I just want to just encourage everybody to live well, to be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chair, recognize, this looks like calling user one.
Mayor Wimbley was.
All right, let's keep it moving. Mayor and cons- well, sorry, I'm sorry about that, City Clerk?
Um, yes, I just wanted to offer my condolences also to um Councilman Moner's family. Um, he was a really big um supporter of mine, always helped out with the clerk's office in reference to um elections. And I do want to um offer my condolences to the family.
Thank you. City Treasurer?
Yep, uh, so as we discussed earlier, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, as well as the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments, will be on the June seventh uh council agenda. Um, also, uh, this week, we'll be getting the April revenue and expenditure reports over to council. Um, big thing that happened today, I I wanted to give a shout out to Tracy. She got all of the F D C V T grant applications in for the fire department, the police department, and for D P S. Um, there's a lot of, that was a heavy lift, and she got it done. Um, also, uh, D M payroll, we are now in the process of onboarding them to bring them a role uh onboard as our payroll provider and some H R items. And lastly, the employee benefit plans. We have started the process of open enrollment for the uh medical insurance for hep and the long-term and disability insurance with the Hartford, so that's uh, we're making strides in those, and everything's on track with that.
Awesome. Thank you, V J, for your continued work.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving right along. All right. Council? Councilman Chisholm, you want to start?
Sure, yes. Uh, I also offer my condolences and sentiments to the Moner family in the past and of Lorenzo Moner. Um, it was quite the shock to get that information from you, Mister Mayor, that he had transitioned. And then also, I would like to just say thank you to our uh City Clerk Felicia Rutledge for her service in the past as our City Clerk, and her service at this particular time staying on with us in a consultant capacity until we hire a new City Clerk. Much appreciated, and that's all I have, Mister Mayor.
All right, and just speaking on that, Council, we do need to set up a few dates, because we do have, I think, believe, uh Felicia's, correct me if I'm wrong, is about three really good applicants, but I know that Council wanted to see all the applicants, so we'll be forwarding those to you this week. And then, you know, of course, you know, you guys go through it and and tell us what you what what your thoughts are as it relates to those applicants, but we have to choose that person as a body, so, you know, we're looking to have um, you know, interviews, special meeting with this body for us to be able to to move forward. So I would ask that when that information comes out from the from uh Felicia Rutledge, along with our H R Director, that you guys know respond back, you know, on the email, and then that way we can move this process forward pretty quick. Because we have had people that are, and we have yeah, we've got some nice, some nice candidates, so I'm excited about that position. All right, thank you, Councilman Chisholm. Councilman Shaw?
I too want to give my condolences to uh the Lorenzo Moner family. Uh, we we first got on council together, and uh he was, he was such of a, you know, a happy character, I say, you know, uh, always had something, you know, uh, funny to say when we was on council sitting there, so I definitely wasn't, it was a great shock to me. It seemed like I just uh saw Councilman Moner, and it was a very great shock when I got the text uh that morning. Uh, you know, it just, you know, I'm really kind of lost for words because I still, you know, remember him and smiling face and his wife also, and to his family. Uh, such a great loss uh to the family. So I just, my heart goes out to them. Uh, I did want to touch on also, uh, Mister Chair, uh, we talked about the the nuisance abatement program. And, you know, we need to really kind of, you know, go over that. Hopefully, we can get a chance to talk this week uh concerning that program. Um, because we have a lot of of, you know, issues. I know in my area, uh, there's a lot of, you know, nuisance uh that that is, you know, in the area. Uh, whether it's grass, whether it's uh noise, whether it's speeding, um, whether it's vacant homes that needs to be uh cut or boarded up or trash being removed. Um, so I I definitely want to talk about that, that nuisance abatement, because it, you know, it speaks of not necessarily uh the way that I'm speaking of it if we have a property that may be a nuisance. Uh, whether it's a person who's parking on the grass or whether shots being fired from a house. I know that you are familiar with a house that we had on uh Magnolia Street. Uh, some, maybe about a month ago, that had some shots being fired from that house. Uh, you know, different things of that nature uh that causes the neighborhood, you know, causes a nuisance in the neighborhood. So I just want to bring that out to you so that we can uh be able to have some conversation and seeing how we can really put some boots on the ground or some teeth into this uh ordinance here so that we can make sure if we get so many calls, excuse me, so many calls uh about a particular property, um, how how does that go to be a nuisance or being on a nuisance list so that either the landlords or the tenants have to maybe be hit in the pockets or some type of violation letter being sent to them? So we definitely want to uh, you know, get with you sometime this week to talk about that, and maybe we can strengthen that uh because we have a lot of hazards, you know, within the area. And also, uh, with that being said, a a list of the foreclosed properties, I know you sent out this list before, but some of the properties that I see and have addresses are not on that list. I don't know, maybe they may be city-owned properties. But if you can send an updated list to me with all of those properties, I know we had some properties that were on the demolition list. Uh, they was going through some balance with um uh being demolished and what have you, so if that can be a part of the list also. So we can take care of some of these properties that we have in the district that needs to be, you know, well-kept up. Whether it's um, I don't know if they city-owned properties or they have an owner to those properties. And also, Mister Chair, um, I would like uh Police Patrol on uh Sunningdale Street that is south of Avondale um on Sunningdale and also on Rosewood Street. Rosewood. And I didn't get a chance to uh send out an email to my D P S Director, Jerome, I know you're on the line, uh, but I didn't get a chance to get with you this week. I apologize. But on Rosewood Street, if we can get some uh patch on that street, it it, you know, near the school over there um in front of, you know, uh, the 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 golf course, so to speak. Uh, is that street, you know, is really, really crumbling there, and uh definitely we want to get a repay, but I know, you know, the situations that we're in thus going far, this far. Uh, but if we can get some patch over there on that street.
I I'll get it. I'll put it on my list for this week, sir. That's off a whole, that's off a whole number six.
Okay.
On the off the golf course on the backside.
Yes, sir, I appreciate.
All right, I'll I'll put that on my list for this week, sir.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you, sir. I appreciate the work.
Okay, all right.
And that's all I have, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Wiley?
I have nothing.
All right, moving right along. Councilman Williams?
So thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, I too would like to send my uh condolences to the Moner family, who I've been knowing basically most of all my life. Um, and um I also would like to um encourage all of the residents to come out on uh the beautification cleanup. Uh, la- last month, we had a wonderful time. And it just, it's just a challenge that, and the wonderful people. And I I just have to admit, I I I didn't, I was really shocked at all of the men that came out to help. And I hope it'll be that encouraging again this Saturday, you know, um. I I still want to send that challenge to all the council persons, you know, to come out in your areas. You need to be that your area might not need nothing, but come on over in my area, uh. Uh, I could use you, you know, so, you know, we'd like to to make an impact. If you need me over in your area, you know, just just holler, you know, I I our state rep said, holla, holla, just holla. We we we'll come that way. Let's get it, let's get, let's 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 clean our own city up, you know, and and be productive about making this a great city once again to live in. Inglewood is a love city. I don't care what you say, it's small, but it's a love city, and and we just have to continue to do things. So I hope you come on out next Saturday and join join us with a cup of coffee. Uh, they have uh donuts and sweets and stuff like that, and get you a pair of gloves, and just, if you don't do nothing but a block or two, you know, that's that's still appreciated. Okay, and I also would like to um um talk about, um, I was, I was really impressed today with a lot of people who called me uh today, and um I won't get into no name calling, but a lot of people called me today who've been trying to meet and put together our veteran memorial and parade, okay? Uh, now, it might not be as big and fancy as we used to have it, but it it come together and pay tribute to our fallen uh veterans and the veterans who sacrificed their life and stuff like that on Memorial Day. I I was really happy to hear that. And I hope that everyone on this line is that under the sound of my voice and pastor word is, that we're going to have that uh, we're going to have that celebration.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
Councilman Williams, just just to what we sh- with respect to what it is, we can't say that we're going to have the actual event as of yet just because of the late date of it. Um, number one, um, the street closure. And we're looking at, you know, to be able to do that, it has to come through the county. And we have been in contact with the county, and um they've told us at this point that we we can't uh you close the street, so.
You're kind of cutting me off there, Mister Mayor. I wasn't, I I I I understand about the parade and stuff.
Okay.
Like that, that wasn't what I'm saying. I said, we're going this the memorial celebration, okay?
Okay, got you.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely have that, you know, whether it's in a parade or not, but I would like to see us come together with our small gathering like we always do. You know, Inglewood always have a way of of bringing things together, and I just hope whatever whatever paperwork we need or something like that, and if I could be inspirational, trying to get help help get it through, I would be glad to, okay? But we should come together, you know, uh, for Memorial Day and and continue to pay uh tribute, not only to our fallen veterans, but the 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 pay tribute to the people who have fallen by the wayside right here in our own city. We've had a lot of people have passed away, and we just want to get an opportunity to come out and, you know, and just have that 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 a unity of prayer throughout the city. So I I hope I ain't stepping on nothing or turning or something, but I'm I'm just bringing it out because I think we should, you know, it was mentioned, and I think we should get together and 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 let it make it happen. Um, I'll leave it like that, and and I, and that, that's, I guess that's all I have at this time. I hope that um that we will continue to have peace with one another and love one another and and keep moving this city forward. I think we're doing a great job. A lot of people might differ, but I think we're doing a great job, you know? And uh I still say that I thank God that District One is the cleanest district in this city of Inglewood. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Williams. No disrespect. I apologize for cutting you off. All right, Council, Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I don't really have anything to report tonight. I would just like to also echo echo the comments that my fellow colleagues had made tonight. Um, would just like to send my condolences, heartfelt condolences to the Moner family. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. All right, and and me too. Lorenzo Moner was not only a friend, but he was a mentor to me uh as well. Had an opportunity to uh work with him and and to learn from him. He's uh dignitary within our community, and I salute his leadership and his sacrifice for service to our community. Um, if you'd like to pay your respects to the Moner family, tomorrow funeral is at ten A M at Saint Maria Garita Parish, and I hope I'm saying that correctly. Um, again, it's Saint Maria Garita Parish at two, zero, seven, one, zero Colgate, that's in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, four, eight, one, two, five. Again, for the memorial ser- service for Lorenzo Moner. Arrangements are tomorrow at ten A M. We'll make sure that we post that information, or if you want to send any cards or condolences to the family. Um, all right, so let's get down to it really quickly. I want to introduce our new H R Director, Fanny Craft, to the City Council and to the community. Um, I didn't see Fanny's name on here, but I know she's on there with one of those phone numbers she told me she was on. And I wanted to at least put a face with the name. Fanny's been working really hard already. Sue Justice, thank you for all the work that you've done for us, leading us up to this point. Um, coming from, you know, our our, one of our other commissioners, Convince A Mendisa, who introduced us to Sue Justice and Emery H R for carrying us through, and Rhonda Glover for all the work that she did in H R, helping us keep all the pieces together, and of course, our Treasurer, V J, and his team and everything that they did. And Fanny is, when I say that she's um a tremendous asset already to the organization, she's hit the ground running. And she's pretty much met with pretty much all the staff. She hasn't, she she's out there doing it right now. So I didn't see how she's, there she, nope, I don't have her there, but I know she says she was on the call, so.
She's on by telephone. She got to press uh star nine.
Okay, Fanny, if you're on by telephone, press star, star nine. All right, and then also, too, uh, in my office, I am proud to announce that we are promoting from within, and I'll say that as a promotion, uh working with being directly for me is my executive assistant, uh Safe Alsona. And uh Safe was our crime scene technician over in P D for a number of years, and now he's taken on the role of our executive assistant uh with the support still of Rhonda Glover. Uh with the support still of Rhonda Glover, she's still helping us out with some stuff with payroll and that as we trans uh. Transfer over to a DP payroll, I'm sorry, DM payroll. And um yeah, Safe has already hit the ground running, he's been doing a fantastic job. And I know he's on the call, Safe, if you can raise your hand, because he's actually right here in City Hall with me. Um so, um you know, so we can put, there he is, Safe, let's put a face with the name, there he is. And.
Evening. We'll say something. Mayor, Counsel, uh my name is Safe, spelled S.A.I.F., pronounced Safe like safe house. Uh I've been involved with the City of Inglewood for several years now. I started as an auxiliary police officer and from auxiliary police officer to uh Chief Riley and Assistant Chief Ratliff. Hired me as a police cadet and from there, I was sent to uh crime scene school. And I did crime scene investigation and uh property management for several years. And I'm excited to be here, excited to serve and uh um thank you for the opportunity.
And we'll say if you are an asset, we really appreciate you already. And I want to make sure that um the council has your number and all that good stuff, so make sure you send out an email to all the council. With your information so they know how to get in touch with you. And that's the same thing for Fanny as well, so we'll make sure that uh one of the things that uh Fanny has came right in. And and she's done this implemented uh introduction type of system for all of our new hires. So uh Counsel, you'll be getting uh an email from me as it relates to Fanny. Uh her background along with Safe and his background. And we do have some other hires coming aboard um in the DPW department. And as we move along and fill in those vacant vacancies where they are, you will get that information directly from me, so. Again, just thank you, uh Safe and Fanny, and we'll have Fanny up, Fanny, we'll get her, we'll get her, you guys will be seeing her if you need her. Make sure that you get, uh you guys get that information. All right, uh Vijay stole a little bit about Thunder earlier. Vijay, you always see, like you always get me on that, but I just wanted to say thank you so much to Tracy. Um along with uh Chief Ratliff, um Chief Riley, uh Chief Hubbard. Um Jerome Bivens, Victoria Joyce, uh it was definitely a team effort. Heidi from Plan Brea as it relates to getting all of the grants in in a timely fashion. And then, of course, our Special Projects Manager Tracy and Jennings for bringing it all together. So Tracy, if you could, please, just for the general public, run those. Uh a list of those grants that we, that we put in with a quick explanation of um the actual acronym for. FDC TV.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel and Inglewood residents. So today, this afternoon, we did submit for the. Financially distressed cities, villages and townships. Twenty twenty-one funding to the Michigan Department of Forestry. Um for grants that totaled two million seven hundred and forty-nine. Thousand one hundred and ten dollars. And those grants are for. The City of Inglewood Fire Station renovations to include roof, bathrooms and HVAC system. The City of Inglewood Police Department Behavioral Health. Clinician, physician. The City of Inglewood Department of Public Works Fire Hydrant Replacement Project. And the City of Inglewood Department of Public Works Water Main Dead End Elimination.
Thank you so much, Tracy, any questions from Counsel? For Tracy as it relates to those grants and that submission?
You said that's, that's, that's new money?
You say one more time, sir?
Is that new money?
Yes, that'll be new money, yes, sir.
Oh man.
Yeah, we're going, now let me say this, that we haven't, you know, received that money as of yet. One of the things that, as we talk, as we're talking to the state, uh Vijay and I, we had a call today with uh. With Joyce Parker's team from the state of Michigan and thank you so much Deputy Treasurer for all you, you're doing with the City of Inglewood. Working in conjunction with us because they've granted us a few dollars too, right Vijay? Um but Eric Klein and Larry, um they, they said to us, one of the biggest things. That we can do as a community is that we can advocate for those grants to our representatives. So we want to make sure that even though, you know, the city from the administrative point and of course, the council have sent that stuff in. Individually, as a council person, reach out to um, you know, at the state level, your representative. And of course, you know, you can send an email over to the governor, to your state treasurer. But also to, to, on the federal level, to our, our senator and our congresswoman as well. And and it just, you know, gives them a little bit more ammunition as we're looking to secure those grants. So again, it's a grant, we want to get that money and hopefully, you know, it it doesn't come with any upfront cost to us, to the city. We're looking for grants where we can get the money and and not have reimbursements if we can, right Vijay, as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're working the relationship as well as we can, making sure we're applying for everything we can.
Yep, all right, then I know one of the biggest things too, you know, as we talk about the community is, is. It's heating up a little bit as it relates to the weather, thank God for that. More and more people are out and, you know, of course, we're looking to, you know, just survey the community, clean the community and have more people involved. We did meet with um few people from, a couple of people from the Housing Commission today. Along with the resident council from Housing, Councilman Williams, uh as Representative District One. Chief of Police and Assistant Chief of Police and Tamika Sutton, the Assistant for Director Aaron Cooper. And Aaron, I'll be giving you a call because I know that you're definitely supporting everything that we're doing. But one, one of the main things that we talked about in that meeting is for us to start to formulate more community block clubs. And we need to do that here in the City of Inglewood. Um we know that um from data, that you have block clubs in your community, crime goes down. The more eyes that's out there, the more people is looking, more people reporting, people know you out there. So we're going to be looking for monies to be able to equip our community block clubs. And those block clubs that are already here and doing the work within the community, we encourage you to continue to do the work. We want to be able to help you, so that'll be forthcoming. Um AC Ratliff is leading that up and we'll be working in conjunction with the Inglewood Housing to do some more stuff. Um as it relates to that. Um so I just want to just thank, you know, you know, we, COVID is what it is. I just want to continue to, you know, just, you know, just thank the staff here in the City of Inglewood for all the work that they're doing, all the. Countless hours that they're putting in, the extra stuff that they do that people don't see. And of course, all of our frontline works and the work that you continue to do, so thank you all. All right, with that being said, I know that um we didn't have any closed session items in orientation. Is it anything for closed session before we lead off, David? They just come up. Oh, hold on a second, I'm sorry, guys, Mr. Bivens, let's recognize Mr. Bivens. Councilman Chisholm, if you can. I see his hand raised.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, uh good evening, Mayor, Counsel and to the audience. Um sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention this during public comment. But you know, I, my special meetings this Thursday at seven PM to talk about the sewer elimination process. Um that money that we asking for the state has went up. So I hope people will attend that meeting because of money requirements from the state is that I hold a public hearing. So I'll be holding that public hearing Thursday with council voting, passing the adoption of resolution. So we can have that submitted by June the first. And then we'll be coming back to hold another special meeting in June for the water infrastructure. We'll be requesting a large sum of money from the state too. Like the mayor said, we trying to capture every dollar I get that we could get. So I need the citizens of Inglewood to come out, ask questions. My engineers will be there to do the presentation, ask questions. Make sure you clearly understand how your tax dollars and how we going to get this money will be utilized. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bivens, thank you for all the work that you're doing with the engineers and your staff and and the community. We know you have a small group over there and keeping it all together, so um know this, I've, I've been getting, you know, calls about the parks being cut. And um, you know, just, you know, property that the city owns being cut and vacants being cut. We are in the process of 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 doing that. However, we need to get next council meeting that we meet council, we need to vote on our new budget. So um coming into, you know, the summer months, need to make sure that we equip our. Our departments with everything that they need in order for them to be able to deliver the service to the community that deserve it, that deserves it the most. And I believe Inglewood deserves it all, so. All right, guys, call for, I'm calling for German, their motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All that want to stay, say nay and we'll see you next time.
Question though, before you go off, I I was on mute.
Okay, Councilman, we, we just.
Did that mean, Bivens, you having, is that going to be on the Zoom or is it going to be?
Yes, it's going to be on Zoom.
Okay, yes. Zoom number?
Yeah, we'll send all that out for the general public and you all as well.
It's already out, Mr. Mayor, it's online and it's been sent to council as well.
See, look at that, look at that, all right, thank you so much, City Clerk.
All right.
All right, everyone, have a great rest of your week, thank you.